All right, folks, here we go. First up is AC 1917, our administrative hearing. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Melendez to get us started. Mr. Melendez?
Thank you, Mr. President. You'll be having a full hearing tonight on AC 1917. The issue in this appeal is whether a zone map amendment from MXL to MXM should be approved. The EPC approved this request, finding that the zone map amendment would promote several comp plan policies relating to areas of change in centers and corridors. The city council had its accept or reject hearing on this matter at its last meeting and voted to not accept the land use hearing officer's recommendation at that time in favor of a full hearing tonight. You will be hearing from the parties this evening related to this matter. The presentation that they provide is limited to the record that is before you. The city council cannot accept new evidence at this time. The hearing procedure is laid out in your material before you with opportunities for the appellants and the appellees to be heard, and so at this time it would be appropriate to call the appellants for their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez, and folks be patient with me. This is the first time I've done this one, so at this point, we're ready to swear folks in. Is that what I remember?
Mr. President, yes.
That's right. So for all presenters, other than attorneys, have to be sworn in. The parties are allowed to cross-examine each other and all those who will testify. Will you please stand up and raise your right hand? I see one, two, three. Perfect. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
You're good. That's the easiest one you'll do. The time limit for presenters are as follows. We'll have eight minutes for the presentation from the appellant, which is the Sharon and Bill Stepler, Sandy and Bob Luhon, and the West Side Coalition of Neighborhood Associations; ten minutes for presentations from the appellee consensus planning; and three minutes for presentations by or response to questions by the city planning staff. And we'll have additional time for the rebuttal by the appellant for up to two minutes if we -- if that's needed. With no other procedural things, we'll begin with an eight-minute clock from the presentation from the appellants. For those on behalf of the -- there we go. Go on up. Thanks.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for setting this hearing on our appeal. I'm Sharon Stepler. I'm one of the individual appellants in this appeal. I'm sharing my time tonight with Rene Horvath from the West Side Coalition. As I said, I'm one of the individual appellants. We're homeowners in La Quintista II, which is a subdivision still under development and is the neighborhood that is closest to the subject site. We're in the Volcano Cliffs area, which is on the south side of Paseo del Norte. The designated urban center for this part of town is on the north side of Paseo. We're very concerned about the impact that this rezoning could have on the south side of Paseo and the entire Volcano Cliffs area. I also think that there is an issue here that has broader implications beyond this particular case. Now, I want to acknowledge upfront, I am a lawyer, but I am not a New Mexico lawyer, and I am no expert on local zoning issues or anything like that. But I do know that the first rule in interpreting any law, any statute, any ordinance, in this case, the IDO, is to look at the plain meaning of the language. And in this case, the IDO, the applicable sections that we're dealing with here, required the rezoning applicant to show by substantial evidence that this requested rezoning would be beneficial to the community and would further the goals of the comprehensive plan. In other words, they had to establish facts. They had to provide some verifiable information. Under the IDO, the EPC was only supposed to approve this application if that substantial evidence had been offered and if that condition had been satisfied. And of course, this requirement is not just for the benefit of the EPC as it makes its decision. It also allows the public to see and understand the basis on which a zoning decision is made. And I think that's actually a really important purpose. Well, in this instance, as the city planning staff detailed in its September 12 report, the applicant did not produce the substantial evidence that the IDO requires. At the hearings, the EPC members stated their opinions that the more intensive uses permitted by the rezoning would be beneficial to the community and would further the comprehensive plan goals. They gave their opinions, but they didn't cite any information, any objectively verifiable information, any evidence to support their opinions. And candidly, I don't know the basis for their opinions after listening to them and after reading the decision. The Luhos report did include a finding that their decision had been supported by substantial evidence, but again, the Luhos report didn't identify that either. There were discussions of there being a corridor and it being an area of change, but if simply being in a corridor and being in an area of change were enough to satisfy those very specific substantial evidence requirements, the IDO would say so, and it doesn't. Now, it's been suggested that the EPC had the discretion to grant this application as a matter of policy, and certainly that the EPC has a great deal of discretionary authority and policymaking authority. But I couldn't find anything in the IDO that gives the EPC the power to disregard these very specific requirement that an applicant justify a rezoning application with substantial evidence. And that's an evidentiary burden that the IDO specifically puts on an applicant, and the EPC is not authorized to disregard that. And again, this is not just a legal technicality. The rezoning procedures that are established in the IDO protect the public interest. The substantial evidence requirement provides transparency in the zoning -- rezoning process. And when people are making decisions like where to buy a home, the IDO's procedures for rezoning property give us some assurance that the existing zoning is not going to be disturbed unless someone has shown, has demonstrated, a really good reason to do it. So allowing the EPC to approve a rezoning even when the applicant has not satisfied these very specific requirements for substantial evidence would effectively render that portion of the procedures meaningless. And so for that reason, I would ask you to overturn the EPC's decision. And if you don't have any more questions, I'd like to turn it over to Rene Horvath now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rene Horvath. I live at 5515 Palomino Drive in Taylor Ranch. And I'm getting over a cold, so I hope you can hear me. So there is a lot of issues with this case, and quite -- I'm quite surprised the zone change was approved so easily because it should not have been approved. We've worked very hard on plans on top of that mesa to get the most sensitive development up there. And for years, for the last decade, I've been involved in that. And so right now, they're misinterpreting areas of change. What does areas of change mean? You can do whatever you want? It's -- areas of change does not mean that. And centers and corridors, they're misinterpreting centers and corridors. You put the intensity in the centers, not along the corridors. That's what I've always been told. And I know the staff planner focused a lot on the urban center, and she did a good job on that staff report, and she said the zone change was not justified, and it doesn't meet the criteria for urban centers. So all the intensity goes into the urban centers. And I was told that for 10 years, the intensity would be there and it'd be less intense around the surrounding areas. And so this site is MXL. It's appropriate for neighborhood commercial. And all the people that have participated in this have said so. And so to change it to MXM is much more intense than at MXL. The building heights are higher, and the CPO 12 is not going to protect that. A CPO 12 is only for single-family residents. And so -- and then we don't know what kind of uses you would get with the MXM. You can get a lot more intensive uses, and if they're improper, there's nothing you guys can do about it because you approved it for those types of uses in that zone change. And if the -- if the build -- and the property -- and it doesn't even meet the zoning criteria. It doesn't meet -- well, the staff reports list several of it. That's not consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies regarding activity centers. That's why she focused a lot on the urban centers. That's why her West Side Strategic Plan focused on activity centers. You know, you have your neighborhood activities centers, you have your community activities centers, you have your major activities centers, and you put your activity, your commercial activity really in there, the more intense, you know, accordingly. But neighborhood activity, which the MXL zone is perfect for the neighborhood, and it's worked well for Taylor Ranch. But why did the EPC approve this? I don't know. I don't think they understand the rules, and they are more developers. And we don't have anybody on the EPC anymore that understands protections anymore, good design. We just know they're mostly developers. They understand that. But we need people on these boards that really know the plans better.
Thank you, Ms. Horvath. Next up, we have 10 minutes from the appellee represented by consensus planning.
Will you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes. Mr. President, councilors, I'm happy to be -- have my name associated with consensus planning, but I'm actually not with consensus planning. My name is Larry Wells, and I'm a local attorney, and I'm here to represent the applicants in the matter before you today. There are two parcels that my clients have requested be rezoned from MXL to MXM. Property is vacant. It's on the south side of Paseo del Norte, as the appellants mentioned. The EPC held hearings on September 12 and October 10. There was testimony in both hearings. There was a full record in both of those hearings, as noted by the land use hearing officer. After much discussion and deliberation by the commissioners themselves, they had a unanimous decision to grant the zone change. It was carefully deliberated, and I think it was thoughtfully considered. There was a hearing before your land use hearing officer on December 20, and on January 6, he issued his recommendation to deny the appeal. His grounds were that the EPC did not act fraudulently, arbitrarily, or capriciously, that the decision was supported by substantial evidence in the record, and the EPC did not err in its application of the requirements of the IDO or the comp plan or any other plan. I would like to say, for the benefit of my colleague's argument a moment ago on behalf of the appellant, that the standards of evidence before an administrative hearing are much more relaxed than the rules of civil procedure in courts. And I'm confident that she's aware of the rules of civil procedure in courts. She may be less familiar with how administrative hearings work, but the evidence is in the record and was recognized by your land use hearing officer, who's also a licensed attorney. The ground for support of the zone change was that a different zone district is more advantageous to the community, as articulated in the comp plan and the other plans. Now, the area is the Northwest Mesa Community Planning Area. It's an area of change, which is clearly defined in the comp plan. Paseo del Norte immediately to the north of this property is a regional principal arterial. It's four lanes. It's designated as a commuter corridor, and it's a future premium transit corridor. There is no development in this area along Paseo del Norte, from the escarpment all the way to Universe. The land to the north of Paseo is indeed designated as the Volcano Heights Urban Center. I'm sure the councilors are aware of this, but I'll simply mention, there's nothing there. It's raw land. There's no infrastructure. There's no development. The record on page 129 shows that it's likely that it'll be many years before infrastructure comes to the urban center. This property, on the south side of Paseo at Kimick, has infrastructure now due to the special assessment district efforts of my clients' owners and many other owners in this area. They put a lot of energy into it, and I think it was a success as far as special assessment districts go. There's a traffic light at Kimick and Paseo, and there's -- and the utilities. And so, in short, this commercial property is ready for development. The problem, in my client's opinion, is that the MXL zoning has been an impediment to the development of the site, primarily because of the building size limitation in the MXL zoning. That's 10,000 feet for a business establishment. The difference between MXL and MXM was discussed briefly in your January 22 meeting. I'll just summarize that MXL is mixed-use, light-intensity, and I think Counselor Benton asked the question is similar to C1, a neighborhood, the neighborhood -- neighborhood commercial. And in fact, it is. It's neighborhood-scale convenience and shopping -- for shopping needs. MXM is more intense, but it's not highly -- high-intensity. It's medium intensity. And the concept that's expressed in the IDO is it's to provide a wide array of moderate-intensity retail, commercial, institutional, and moderate-intensity residential uses with taller multi-story buildings encouraged in centers and corridors. This is a corridor, and my clients submit that medium-intensity use would be more beneficial here. Now, the crux to this appeal, I think what's the center of the disagreement between the parties, is this: the appellants argue that allowing MXM uses near an urban center will detract from potential urban center growth, that modern-intensity mixed-use in an urban center is preferred over moderate-intensity outside of a center, and that this zone change will weaken the intent of the comprehensive plan regarding urban centers. With respect, there is no support for those arguments, in my opinion, in the comp plan or in the IDO. The applicant's primary argument is that the comp plan encourages higher-density urban land use in designated centers, and this does not exclude development in designated corridors, even if they're outside a center. Allowing MXM near this future urban center where there is infrastructure now, we feel, will act as a catalyst for the ultimate development of the urban center where there is nothing now. And we feel it is very possible that it will spur the actual development of the urban center that was designated in the comp plan. Both the EPC and the land use hearing officer determined that there are no policies in the comprehensive plan that prohibit moderately-intensed uses outside of centers. In fact, your land use hearing order -- officer pointed out that there is substantial evidence in the comp plan to the contrary, and he cited much of it in his recommendation to I would like to comment briefly on proximity. Proximity between this property and residential uses and the proximity between this property and our open space. I think it's important to note that from the west of these two properties, it's 523 feet to an R1B zone to the south. It's 560 feet from the east property to the major open space to the south, and over 1,000 feet to the open space to the east. I would comment that the MXM zoning in the urban center, Volcano Heights Urban Center, is closer to residential and to open space. So the idea that's been articulated that this is going to ruin or be an impediment to residential or will be a problem for our open space, we feel is not meritorious. I think for the protective -- the concepts of protection of the areas of these elements, our cultural, our view, and so forth, have been articulated from the comp plan concepts into the IDO as overlay zones. For example, part of this property is in a view-protection overlay zone. It will have to comply, not the whole property, but a substantial part of it. And of course, for our open spaces, we have proximity to open space limitations that are in the IDO and have been carefully considered, and those are 330 feet. As I mentioned, the Volcano Cliffs Urban Center is closer to both, the residential and the open space. I have not read a more thorough analysis of an EPC appeal than the recommendation that your land use officer -- land use officer, hearing officer presented in this case. I also don't think that I can improve on his summary of the matter, and so I'd like to recap it in closing with you. He concluded that corridors are not excluded or disconnected from comp plan policies concerning development in centers, as the staff planner suggested. He concluded that after reviewing all the applicable policies in the comprehensive plan, there are no policies in the comprehensive plan that conflict with the concept of allowing moderately-intense land uses outside a designated center in a designated corridor. His conclusion, as mentioned by the appellant a few moments ago, was that the record amply demonstrates that the EPC balanced and weighed the applicable policies for this matter and that the issues were well-debated by the parties, and the record will show you that it was discussed both in the first hearing and the second hearing by the commissioners. The policy and the findings of the EPC are logical, well-reasoned, supported by the record and by the comprehensive plan, and therefore, the EPC's decision is entitled to deference. That was the statement of your land use hearing officer, and I believe it is a correct statement. Mr. President, councilors, we're hopeful that after a full consideration of this case here tonight, that you will arrive at the same well-reasoned conclusion that the land use hearing officer did, that the zone change should be permitted and that the appeal should be denied.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation or response by city planning staff. I see Mr. Brito is here. Before we let Mr. Brito get into that, are there any particular questions from councilors for planning before we get into that presentation? Hearing, Mr. Brito? Just want to be sure everybody had a chance to ask anything weird.
Mr. Chair -- Mr. President, councilors, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things for the record. The subject site is partially within the view-protection overlay 2, and it covers the northern portion of the eastern half of the site. It does limit all structures to 15 feet regardless of the use. It is also within character-protection overlay 12, but is not in the height restriction sub-area. And regarding the general retail small in the MXL zone, it doesn't limit building size to that 10,000 square feet. It limits individual establishments to 10,000 square feet. So for example, you could have a 50,000-square-foot building with five establishments in it. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Counselor Benton for planning before we come back.
Mr. Brito, so in the original conversions, this was seen to be, as was referred to, the question I had previously, it previously had been C1, community commercial zoning, correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton --
Or equivalent.
It was equivalent, yes. It was in a sector development plan with a SU2 zone, a village center, which corresponded to C1, hence the conversion to MXL.
And the -- this would be more akin to C2 under the old system?
Correct. It -- the C2 community commercial zone.
But to clarify what you just said, to confirm, the 15-foot height limit would apply to all the properties?
Only to the northern portion of the east property. That's the subject of this appeal.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Brito. And what do you make of the applicant's argument that this could actually cause the development of the urban center to be more likely? Because one of the long-term policies of the council and the city is to actually, you know, cause this jobs imbalance that you have in the west side versus the east side. And one of the things we need in order to make that housing-jobs imbalance better is to get actually more jobs over there. Does the planning department concur that this zone change would actually be more likely to be a catalyst for the urban center in the future?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, in response to that question related to jobs-housing balance on the west side, that usually refers to base jobs, not necessarily service jobs, retail jobs, but base jobs with higher-paying salaries. And it potentially could have a catalytic effect. It's unknown at this time, but the fact stated that there is infrastructure available at the subject site is true, and that there is limited infrastructure within the Volcano Heights Urban Center at Unser and Paseo del Norte.
So, yeah, the MXM wouldn't be, you know, base jobs, but the urban center could have base jobs. I mean, that would be the ideal, right?
Yes. The hope is that the urban center develops much like maybe up-down or another campus-type development with higher-paying base jobs that could also support other employment on the west side to help minimize the cross-river traffic that occurs now.
Yes.
Can I just make a couple of clarifications relating to the process that we're dealing with tonight? So the role of the city council is to determine whether or not the EPC erred in its decision based on its evaluation of the comp plan and the standard before it. It made its findings, finding that this particular rezone would be more advantageous based on policies for the corridor. However, within that analysis, there wasn't discussion about the pre-IDO zoning or base economic jobs related to the site. And so you should probably limit your consideration to whether or not, based on the findings of the EPC, it erred, and in the test the EPC followed, neither of those criteria are relevant.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez. Counselor Gibson with that note.
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Melendez. So I won't pursue that, that -- the question that I had, but I do appreciate you reminding us of what our role is here. Thanks.
Counselor Borrego for planning.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm going to ask some questions that are related to probably the EPC's decision. And the first question I have is, Resolution 270 is still the guideline that is used for zone changes. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego --
Or the guidelines for Resolution 270.
The integrated development ordinances, zone-change criteria that are now part of the ordinance, were modeled very closely on the language from Resolution 270, 1980.
Could you state what those three criterias are, just for the record, please? Or just reiterate?
The IDO's zone-change criteria are contained in Section 67F3. There are several criteria, including showing consistency with health, safety, general welfare. That's usually done by demonstrating compliance and/or furthering of applicable goals and policies from the comprehensive plan. There is a new criteria related to being located within an area of consistency, but the subject site is not. It's in area of change, so that's not applicable. The third criteria is show -- the applicant must show that the change is advantageous, more advantageous to the community by showing that comprehensive plan goals and policies are furthered. There's a criteria where the applicant has to demonstrate that none of the new uses in the proposed zone would be harmful to the adjacent properties, the neighborhood or the community. There's a criteria that -- criterion that the infrastructure necessary for the development is either in place or will be provided by the development itself and not be dependent on the city providing infrastructure.
So in the EPC's findings, which of the criteria that you just read -- So, in the EPC's findings, which of the criteria that you just read were their basis for the zone change?
The EPC's findings in the record, specifically on pages 14 and 15, the EPC found that all of the criteria were met by this application.
Okay. I want to go back to that question. Mr. Brito, was there discussion at the planning commission with regard to sensitive lands and the distance from the monument for this property? Was there any discussion?
Yes.
There was?
There was discussion.
And do you recall what the distance is for this property from, from the monument?
The-
Is there any, just-
In previous testimony, just a few minutes ago, the, the party opponent's attorney correctly stated those distances of over 500 feet to the south and over 1,000 feet to the east.
To the south and to the east. Was there any consideration for the distance from the monument? And I, and I don't know if this is going into new territory, but the, the monument on the north, which is across the street from Paseo, now you can't raise that issue. Okay, I just wanted to check. So, the attorney says that's not part of the record-
Mr. President, it's not that it's not part of the record, it's, it's that it's factually incorrect. So, across the street is property zoned N R B P. It's not part of the monument.
It's not part of what?
The monument. It's not open space. It's resi, uh, non-residential business park.
No, I'm just asking what the distance is from this property to the monument on the north side. That's all I'm asking.
It, Mr. President, according to the diagrams that are submitted in the record, on page 86 of the staff report, it talks about the property to the north, and the monument is not referenced. The property to the north is zoned N R B P. It's currently zo, uh, vacant property. So, the monument in this particular instance is to the south and to the east, and with a bit of wraparound near the urban center to the west.
Okay, I'll, I'll stay away from that. I guess the question with regard to sensitive lands and the monument itself, would you consider this area to be closely adjacent to the monument?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, it, it's in the vicinity of the major public-
About a half mile, I think, probably.
It's in the vicinity, but it is not adjacent or within 330 feet, which would require site plans to go before the planning commission for special review. The subject properties are far enough away from the major public open space that that kind of extraordinary review is not required.
And in the record, I guess it says that only part of this is in the, only the northern portion is in the view plain area. What, how much of that property is in the view plain area? Do you have any idea?
Uh, it would probably be the two acres of the eastern property that's immediately adjacent to Paseo del Norte.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd also just clarify that the language in the IDO suggests that when the view preservation area touches a piece of property, that view preservation requirement is applicable to the entire property regardless of where the line on the map is located.
So, it does affect the entire property if, if they develop-
Mr. President, on the base-
If they didn't subdivide.
Based on the current plating, that is correct.
If they didn't subdivide. Okay. Now, Mr. Brito, could you read for the record what the permissive uses are in the M X L zone and what the permissive uses are in the M X M zone? Assuming you have your IDO with you.
I do, in my laptop, I could, I could grab that, but there is discussion-
Could you just generally maybe explain them then, if you don't have it handy?
If you look on page 106 of the record, there's a discussion of some of the differences in uses. In general, many of the uses that are allowed in M X L are also allowed in M X M, but some notable differences include bar, light vehicle fueling station, light vehicle sales and rental, mortuary, pawn shop, and transit facilities that are conditional in M X L but become permissive in M X M. Some of the uses that are not allowed in M X L but are permissive in M X M include hospital, catering service, and nightclub. Liquor retail is an accessory use in M X L, but it is permissive in M X M. A drive-through use is conditional in M X L, but it becomes a permissive accessory use in M X M. So, it, it's more a, a difference in intensity. That's the big difference between M X L and M X M.
So, would you, would you say that the M X M then is more intense than the M X L uses that are permissive? I mean-
Most, most definitely, yes. There, there, that's the hierarchy.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Can I just make one more quick clarification? So, for some of those uses that are listed, and to the extent it's helpful for your deliberation, the prox, there are uses that are permissive in the various zones, but then for uses that could have certain impacts, they become conditional based on their proximity to residential zoning. And this particular site is bordered by residential zoning on two sides. And so, because of that fact, the IDO would place liquor retail and auto fueling as conditional uses and not permissive.
And I just want to remind the parties and councilors, as we're doing to direct your questions through the presiding officer, only so we can allow our other staff and other folks to keep up with the conversation and interject where we get off track here a little bit, but thank you.
So, just one more comment, councilors, and I'm not going to say anything more until later on, but it seems to me that the EPC, in their decision, said that, I mean, they basically said that all guidelines from, that were incorporated from 270, 1980 into the IDO have been met, and that includes infrastructure and other things, which I don't know if those were discussed at the EPC, but it concerns me some that all of these guidelines were met. And that area is basically undeveloped. So, I just, you know, right now, it's, it has developed as residential, and, and I understand that this is a neighborhood commercial, but I guess my question in my mind is, you know, is it really appropriate to have this higher intensity use? And, and, and so I'm going to leave it at that right now.
Thanks, Counselor Borrego. Thank you, Mr. Brito. Councilors will have a chance to deliberate and ask additional questions and follow up in a minute. We want to move on to the final two minutes, two-minute rebuttal by appellants, if you have any. Ms. Deppler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, just two quick points. Counsel for Appalay mentioned the distance of, of this site to the residential area and comparing it to the distance of the urban center to residential areas there. But as we specifically raised at the, the hearing in front of the EPC, what we're really concerned about is the impact of the increased traffic on Chemick Drive, which runs across my backyard, and also runs along the La Quinta open space, and Rosa Parks Drive to what would be the much more intensive commercial uses. And as you've heard, there's a wide range of things that could be there that cannot be there now, and so we're very much concerned about the, the, the great increase in traffic and this open-ended kind of rezoning. The other quick point I would make is, I, I appreciate the point about more relaxed rules of evidence in administrative proceedings, but there is still a distinction between evidence, which is facts-based, and opinion and argument, which is presumably drawn from facts. And my contention is still that the facts were not there. Thank you. I think Ms. Horvath has something to say, too.
Thank you, Mr. Deppler. Ms. Horvath, you've got about a minute by my clock.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that there were numerous letters sent in, and, and they were very good letters from Open Space Division, the Petroglyph Monument, the neighborhoods. The neighborhoods had a great letter that says their area hasn't developed because the population is now developing here. And you're developing on the salt, and there was, God, another reason that was really good, but it wasn't that it's not going to be developed. M X L allows you to be developing, and oh, the infrastructure wasn't in place. Chemick Road, two years ago, they pointed out, was just a dirt road. It's only been paved recently. So, then the-
Ms. Horvath, we'll be able to bring that back up and follow some additional issues in a few minutes, but let's observe our rules for the moment, let council start deliberating. Thank you. Councilors, it's up to you. Questions, deliberation, conversation? Counselor Borrego? I'm sorry, Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, we, we have a unanimous EPC decision, and given how diverse our EPC commission is, I think that's unusual for a case like this. Even though it might not be, really be part of the analysis, it kind of is for me that I think it's different when you look at our 270, 1980, when you're trying to downzone somebody against the property owner's wishes versus your upzoning when there's no property owner around who is really even has any skin in the game, who's objecting to it. And I think if you want to, and I, I guess Mr. Melendez kind of corrected me, but in terms of the overall comprehensive plan and the policies, I think that if we want this, if we want the west side to actually work and develop and, and get some base jobs, I think we have to take action that, that encourages that.
Councilors, we're open for deliberation, and we also have the option for a motion if anybody wants to make one. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. I think the question in my mind is regarding the sensitivity of this particular area, which is unlike any other place that we have in the city. You know, we have, what is it, 7,000 acre, over 7,000 acres that are, you know, basically undisturbed property, and the proximity of this area and the proximity of the urban center, the urban center from this particular area is probably another half mile up the street. And so, you know, in my mind, I'm wondering how sort of all the guidelines in the IDO were met by the planning commission, especially, and I don't know if this was raised at the, at the EPC hearing, but especially the, the idea about the infrastructure, because the infrastructure is not in place. And I understand the whole issue of density and creating density in areas that are appropriate, but areas that are within a proximity of an un, the only unprotected land besides the Sandia Mountains and maybe the rivers, is it really appropriate to consider these higher intensity uses? And that's really my question, the question in my mind, as we try to attract, and I, at the last meeting, I, I read into the record all of, well, a lot of the policies regarding open space protections. And I'm not going to reread those into the record because I read them at the last meeting, but it concerns me that, you know, when we have that kind of property that attracts, and I was mistaken when I said 30,000 visitors, we're talking 300,000 visitors a year. And when you're having that sort of traffic, is it really appropriate to have a nightclub? Or, you know, when you're try, when the very reason that you're bringing people to this area is to enjoy the open space and the, and, and, you know, it's important that we allow people to develop their property, but is it really reasonable to, I mean, it's up to the developer to prove that the use that they have now does not allow them the use of their property. So, is it really appropriate to change that? And I would make a motion, I would venture to make a motion that we overturn the EPC's recommendation based on the policies of the open space from the comprehensive plan that I read into the record at our last meeting.
And so, Counselor Borrego, to be clear, your motion would be to grant the, grant the appeal and reverse the decision of the EPC, and I assume you would adopt findings at a subsequent meeting. Is that correct? So, we have a motion?
That is my motion.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Counsel Pena, so the motion is on the floor. Counselor Gibson, you were next. Counselor Bassan, and then I have a quick follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. President. What, can we have the explanation of what the infrastructure is that's being in place right now?
Mr. President, Counselor Bassan, the EPC did make a finding that the necessary infrastructure for development is in place at the site. I just quickly reviewed the staff report and some of the record and was able to identify facts about the existence of roadway infrastructure. As we know, other infrastructure, roadway is not everything, however, that, that usually, with roadway drainage considerations have been made. There is development nearby. It's in the form of residential development, so presumably, other utility type of infrastructure is present in that area. Based on my review of the record, I couldn't find specific facts other than the EPC's finding that the infrastructure was in place as necessary to support the development of this site.
Mr. Melendez, very quickly, I had two questions. I wanted to follow up. Just to clarify again, because we have so many overlays and, and particular nuances to this property as it relates to the open space and other issues, can you clarify for me, I believe I heard Mr. Brito say that, and I heard you say, that the, the visual overlay, whatever it is, essentially imposes a height limit of about 15 feet, even though a larger or higher building might be available under, in M X M and other parts of the city. Does that 15-foot height limit extend across the entire property, as I sort of heard you say, or does that extend only to the parts of the property that are under that overlay?
Mr. President, the entire site is impacted by what's referenced as VPO two in the IDO. This particular zone map amendment request consists of the southeast and southwest corner of Chemick and Paseo del Norte. With respect to the property at the southeast corner, given the language in the IDO, the southeast corner, which is the corner that is closest to the open space, although still over 500 feet away, would be entirely impacted at this time by that limitation.
And to clarify, Mr. Melendez, the other property would not have that limitation, is that correct?
Mr. President, it would not be limited by the 15-foot height limitation. However, there are other aesthetic considerations that would apply relating to colors, building material, rooftop equipment, and attempt to enhance the aesthetic.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez, and one more follow-up, and then I'll be done. Just to clarify, we've heard some different sort of interpretations, and I think, I appreciate your clarifications earlier. Can you tell us, as we heard, I believe the appellant mentioned, what uses would specifically be different under M X M with all of the conditional use requirements and height requirements, et cetera, than what is available in M X L? And I ask that because it, clearly, M X L and M X M are different. They are in more intense uses, but I've heard a number of limitations because of some of the, the distance requirements, for example, around light fuel, light vehicle fueling stations, drive-ups and other things that would make those conditional that wouldn't be normal in M X M if you just checked the chart. Can you tell me what, what, without a conditional use, what would be different?
Mr. President, Mr. Brito, I think, did a, a good job of listing those differences, and so I'll just kind of pick up where he left off and highlight some of that. I think the main difference is with respect to the general retail. General retail is permissive in either M X L or M X M. M X M does permit a larger footprint for a single business. As Mr. Brito pointed out, you could still have a 50,000 square foot structure, but smaller one-off shops within that footprint. But the general retail would permit you to have something larger as a single use closer to 50,000 square feet, which would put you closer into the use of a, of a Walgreens or maybe even a neighborhood market. In addition, the M X M does generally permit more auto-oriented uses. A couple of those specifically referenced, to reiterate, would include a light vehicle fueling center, which is a gas station. However, that particular use, per, per your question, would require- However, that particular use, per your question, would require a conditional use permit because of its proximity to residential, as would liquor retail. So you could not have a freestanding liquor store without going before the zoning hearing examiner. Aside from those uses, Mr. Brito mentioned uses like a bar, a pawn shop, those would be permissive, and they're not permissive in the MXL. So the capture, it's just a greater hierarchy with respect to the market. So you'd capture more retail uses that people might drive a little bit farther to patronize than they would otherwise for an MXL, very small neighborhood type of store.
Thank you, Mr. Melendez. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Looking at the record, it looks like across the street is an NRBP, which is a non-residential business park. What kind of things can be in a non-residential business park across the street?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, I would, actually, probably not fair to Mr. Brito, but I do not have my IDO in front of me, and so if we want a listing of that, if he has that available, I would invite him to come up and talk about that. I'm probably putting him in a place he doesn't want to be, but-
I think our appellies were kind enough to loan us theirs right there on the dais if somebody really needs one.
But, but in general, I think that the name is pretty descriptive. Residential uses, not permissive. What we would associate with a business park type of development would be permissive, and that type of zoning is also what is in existence at the urban center presently at the corner of Unser and Paseo del Norte.
Mr. Brito, you want to respond, or is that appropriate?
Mr. President, Mr. Melendez is correct. The non-residential business park zone allows most commercial uses that are listed in the Integrated Development Ordinance with very few exceptions, and that's the kind of zone that's appropriate within the urban center.
Thanks, sir. Good, Mr. Counselor Harris.
And just to clarify, that's right across the street, right?
Yes, to the north across Paseo del Norte.
Thank you.
Councillors, other questions, other deliberation? Hearing none. We have a motion on the floor, the motion to grant the appeal and reverse the decision of the EPC and to adopt findings at a subsequent meeting. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes? Four? All those opposed, raise your hand, say no? And that motion fails on a four-four. Councillors, we're without a motion and we're back on discussion. Anybody want to make a second motion? Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes. I'm going to move to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the EPC and adopt the findings of the land use hearing officer.
We have a motion in two seconds.
Any other discussion?
I would like to make a comment.
Counselor Borrego.
Since we're still in discussion. One of the, we brought up the issue of infrastructure, and one of the biggest issues that we have in this area, and not just this area, but the entire escarpment, is related to drainage. And for these larger developments, drainage is definitely an issue because most of the drainage goes into the escarp-
Excuse me, is that in the record?
I don't know. I'm, I don't know if I could say this or not. Can I say this?
Mr.-
Sorry, Mr.-
I apologize.
Counselor Borrego was talking about drainage. I don't know if it's in the record.
Is there anyone here to discuss drainage? Can we discuss it?
Mr. President, I mean, it's relevant to infrastructure. I'm not sure that the facts are developed with respect to drainage.
Well, and that's what my point is, is to bring out the fact that the drainage is an issue in these areas, so that's, that's all.
I would, I would recommend disposing of the motion, and if that issue remains relevant. The motion has been to adopt the findings of the land use hearing officer, and that's a complete findings package, and I think it stands on its own with respect to all those issues.
Thank you, Ms. Melendez. And just for a point of clarification, can you remind the council what the standard is needed here in order to approve these motions? I believe we have a little different rule here.
Yeah, Mr. President, it's a little bit unique situation with eight of you on the We haven't encountered this, we don't encounter it regularly. However, luckily, sometimes we don't have guidance. Luckily, in this instance, we do have guidance, and our good friends at the state of New Mexico have given us that guidance in the form of NMSA 1978, Section 3, 218. And that particular statute requires five votes for the city council to overturn the EPC. And so absent those five votes, the EPC decision would not be overturned. So that's, that's sort of where we're at.
And so, Ms. Melendez, we failed to receive five votes on the first motion. If we have five for this current motion, we'll be fine. If we miss on this motion and have no others, then this matter's dead, and it would revert back to the EPC decision by default. Is that what I understand?
Mr. President, based on my read of that law, of NMSA 1978, 321-5, five votes required. A majority of all members of the council may reverse. Absent that action being taken, the city council has met its duty to review the matter, and that perfects the exhaustion of the administrative process in the event somebody wanted to appeal, but the EPC recommendation will remain undisturbed. The EPC outcome, I should say.
I see all the lawyers in the room are very excited about this procedural thing, but it's driving us crazy. All right, Councillors, other discussion on the motion on the floor to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the EPC with Lugo findings. Seeing none, all those in favor of Counselor Gibson's motion to that effect, say yes, raise your hand.
Yes.
And we're back to four. All those opposed? No? So we're four-four? Is that what I got?
Mr. President, based on-
Now, motion fails again.
Based on that outcome, the decision of the EPC remains undisturbed.
Thank you. And that hearing's concluded. Thank you. Yeah, wouldn't we make my first one of those hearings complicated? Thank you, folks, for your input and your participation. We're moving next to final actions. We're going to follow the agenda on this one, and so we are up on 089. Councillors Benton and Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. 089 is adopting zoning conversion rules for properties in batch three of the Phase Two zoning conversion effort as directed by City Council Resolution 1829 and updating the official zoning map. I move a due pass.
I was waiting on, it looks like we have some amendments coming out. All right, and we're going to move to public comment on this item if it's okay with the sponsors. First up, we have Mary Ann Rowley, followed by Mohammed Tahat and Dave Holt. Again, if we call your name, we ask you to come down and come to the front so we can get you queued up. First up, Mary Ann Rowley, is Ms. Rowley here, going twice, three times? No. Mohammed Tahat? Mr. Tahat, welcome. Next up will be Dave Holt and Laura Holt. And since I don't see any other bodies following Mr. Tahat, we will also move to Adam Geddy. Mr. Tahat, come on down. As a reminder, when you see the yellow light, you'll have 30 seconds to conclude your comments.
Okay. I'm Mohammed Tahat. I'm representing Mr. Rabadi. He applied to change the zoning from MXL to MXT. Actually, the criteria was, the prior criteria before the city made the change was SUC1 criteria. That criteria has three correctors. The first one is it's undeveloped, and the other one, the special use zoning, and there is another zone district is more appropriate for that land. Actually, the MXT is more appropriate than MXL. The most differences between them is the MXL have many allowable businesses. Those may reduce the value of the surrounding houses. The first permissive business is the car wash, light vehicle fueling station, light vehicle repair, light vehicle sales, and paid parking lot. All of these businesses will not only reduce the property values in the surrounding area, it will reduce the air quality, it will cause increase in noises and traffic and crimes. I think there is an amendment for the decision from the EPC. The amendment recommend to approve the change from MXL to MXT. This is what I'm supporting. The MXT is more appropriate zoning for this location. I think you-
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Dave and Laura Holt, going a third time. Seeing none, Adam Geddy.
I'm sure if that'll show up. I'm with the Paradise Vista Homeowners Association, Adam Geddy, resident. My front yard faces the same question. It's not going to work, sorry. Basically, as a homeowners association, we would like to see this remain residential and family-friendly, and it appears that we are surrounded by other R1 properties and that on the other side of this property is the national monument. With a change, we understand it's commercial right now, and they're asking for another version of commercial. I would like you guys to consider the nature of the neighborhood and possibly even table this resolution in order for us to get an R1 so that, because right now he's, the developer's asking for us to support him in this change of, of commercial zoning, and yet there's no guarantees that that's what we're going to get. We could get office structures, we could still get a whole lot of commercial going on right in our front yard, and literally on three sides of this property is R1, and the other side is the monument. So the nature of this neighborhood would be violated by allowing it to stay in this antiquated state of zoning, which came from the annexation many, many years ago, and it just kind of stayed that way. But if you really walked in this neighborhood and saw what it was, you would see that it needs an R1 designation. So, and that would also force the developer to do what he says. He says he wants to do residential in that area. Go for it, but it won't be the case if he gets this zoning change.
Thank you, Mr. Geddy. Counselor Jones, did you have a comment? Are you okay? Okay, thanks. Next up, Ricardo Ortega, followed by Felix Rabadi.
Thank you, Councillors. I live on Rabadi Castle, and Mr. Rabadi says Rabadi Castle is a famous place in Jordan, so I feel blessed. But in any event, if it could be made R1, that would be ideal, because there's one outlet for this neighborhood, that's Justin Street. Justin has a steep slope to it, and on the rare times when we have wet streets or icy streets, it's impassable. So to allow commercial, semi-commercial development there or apartments is a terrible idea. It abuts the volcanic open space. I see coyotes there. I see all kinds of wildlife there. It's a lovely place. So R1 would be ideal, but I'm not that familiar with the zoning lingo, but some way to prevent even light commercial would be best for the neighborhood, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Mr. Rabadi.
I'm here to support the city council amendment. We had two meetings with the planning department, and they did recommend to change to MXT, and this was presented to the EPC. The EPC, there was confusion, because there was three, seven other lots in North Albuquerque acre. There were one acre lots. And our plan here, not to, not to do one acre lot. The plan is to do 50-foot lots, which consist with the three surrounding area. There is residential 50-foot lots in the three, in the east, in the west, and in the, in the south. There is no commercial in that area. There is no place for gas station. The, and all the, the majority of the residents, they don't want to see commercial there. They don't want to see heavy traffic. They don't want to see noise or crime. I developed the property across the street, 77 lots. One of the street is called Rabadi Castle Avenue, which the castle was built by the Rabadi's tribe 500 years ago. And one of the street calls Basha Street, which is after my father. I respect, the Rabadi tribe came, originally came from Spain.
Mr. Rabadi, finish your comments there, and we'll have a chance to follow up with questions in a minute.
They came from Spain, and three, the three other streets, Saragosa, Sierra Morena, and Catalina, all those streets, they came, they are cities in Spain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rabadi. We have a couple of amendments from the sponsor, or from Councillors, so I'm going to start with Councillors Benton and Jones for floor amendment number one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll move floor amendment number one, and this, this will be required to consider the second floor amendment that's being put forward. This reads as follows. Attach the spreadsheet on the preceding page of this amendment to 01989 as exhibit X.
Pardon me, I don't have copies of that, of those amendments.
They were just, they were just passed out, but we'll see. I think Counselor Jones has an extra copy there.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Counselor Benton, would you read the-
Attach the spreadsheet on the preceding page, I think this means succeeding page, of this amendment to 01989 as exhibit X.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of floor amendment number one, say yes.
Yes.
That item carries. On to what we'll have as B, which will be floor amendment number two. Councillors Borrego and Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move floor amendment number two. Is there a second?
Second.
And maybe I'll have the planners describe that, but briefly, when I was studying this, I was a little bit troubled that, that the zoning was seeking, when you did the zone change to the IDO, it actually took away an entitlement, and I don't like when our land use does that without a lot of, pardon me.
Would you say that, would you-
Sure, that the old zoning went from the new zoning, from the old zoning to the IDO, he actually took away an entitlement. And when you take away entitlements, it troubles me in terms of constitutional rights and all sorts of things like that, because the landowner actually had the right to do something, and the IDO changed that. And so that made me concerned and made me support this amendment. You'll go ahead and have our, one of our planning staff from the city council talk some more about this.
For the record, we have a motion and a second for floor amendment number two. Ms. Schultz.
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, yes, that, that is correct, that an entitlement was taken away from this property when the IDO was adopted. To set the stage for this discussion about these 29 properties, let me back up a little bit in the process. This is batch three of the Phase Two voluntary zone conversions. This was the effort that the city council directed the planning department to undertake after the IDO was adopted, in an, in an attempt to really clean up our zoning map. There were land use and zoning issues prior to the adoption of the IDO, and the IDO created some land use and zoning issues. And so for one year, the planning department was tasked with taking in voluntary applications from folks who felt like they had a land use and zoning issue under one of five very specific criteria set forth by this council. It's important to make a distinction that the, the zone change criteria you, you talked about just a couple of minutes ago is not applicable to this situation. These, these zoning conversions have very different criteria, very specific criteria that is not related to what we used to know as R 270 1980. The EP, in this batch three, the EPC considered 36 properties for conversion, 29 of which are at, up for discussion right now. These are Mr. Rabadi's properties. He owns all 29 of these. The EPC heard the request to go from the MXL zone to the MXT zone, and citing policies in the comprehensive plan related to the jobs housing balance on the West Side, they felt that zoning conversion was not appropriate. The primary reason being the MXT zone allows single-family houses permissively, whereas the MXL zone does not. So this would be converting to a zone that allows single-family housing, and there are specific policies in the comprehensive plan that says the city should discourage zone changes on the West Side to zones that allow single-family housing. So what's before you tonight is an amendment sponsored by Counselor Harris and Borrego to not go with the EPC's recommendation to not convert these properties. So if the council were to approve the amendment that is before you, it would, in fact, convert his 29 properties from MXL to MXT.
Counselor Harris.
And just to clarify, that was a right that Mr. Rabadi had before the IDO, correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, yes. The prior zoning on- Mr. President, Counselor Harris, yes, the prior zoning on the site, on all of these properties, and some of the surrounding properties in the subdivision was SU1 for C1 uses, and single-family housing was a conditional use under the C1 zone, however, this was SU1 for C1, and so, all conditional uses are actually permissive when you have that SU designation, so, single-family housing would have been a permissive use prior to the IDO.
And one more question, one of the neighbors suggested that we just downzone this to R, and I think that would also go probably too far, I, I'm guessing, because Mr. Rabadi had the ability with SU1, what was it, with C1 with SU1 uses? That, that seems like a broader zoning category than R1, correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, yes, certainly, and it's also important that we maintain what the property owner requested, and the property owner has not requested R1, what he has requested is MXT.
I'm just pointing out that what the neighborhoods want probably, first of all, I think you make a great point, that it's not what the property owner requests, and second of all, I don't think we could do that to the property owner without his consent, would you agree with that?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, as a part of this process, I would, yes, I would agree with that.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Counselor Borrego.
I just wanted to point out, and, and you may want to expand on this, but Counselor Sanchez had looked into an amendment similar to what Counselor Harris and I are looking at here, prior to his unexpected death, and you recently held a meeting in the community, and I just wondered what the sentiment of the community was as a result of that meeting.
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, yes, this past weekend, I did meet with several property owners, probably about 70 of them, out at the site, after the conclusion of the land use planning and zoning hearing meeting two weeks ago, where there was just a lot of confusion about what was allowed under the MXL zone, what would be allowed under the MXT zone, so we stood out there for a couple of hours and talked about the difference between those two zones, and the general sentiment is that lower-density, lower-intensity development is desirable, due to the proximity to the Petroglyph National Monument, which is directly to the south, and also, the existing single-family R1 subdivisions to the north, the east, and the west of the site.
Ms. Schultz, if I can follow very briefly, do we know roughly, approximately how long was the SU, C1 zoning applicable to the site? In other words, was it, has it been present basically from perpetuity when this whole development was planned, or is that relatively new just before the IDO conversion?
Mr. President, the history on this property is a little fuzzy, when you have an SU1 zone, you are expected to have a site plan that goes with that zone, you're not supposed to have SU zoning without having an approved site plan. We could not find, and the planning department could not find any site plan on record for this site, so historically, what that has meant is that those sites, or those parcels, received that SU1 designation when they were perhaps annexed into the city from the county, that we would have given those parcels the closest zoning that the city had, that would have matched what the county had awarded them, and so, as far as I can tell, dating back to the seventies, this, these properties have been SU1 for C1, but the creation of that SU1 for C1 zone is a little bit of a mystery.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, I think my point there, and I appreciate that, and it was a well argued, well articulated, and as well as was done in the, in LOBS, but I, I hear the, on the matter of the amendment on the floor, I mean, I do think this property has had this allowable use, in other words, sort of towards what was to Rabadi, and is asking us to sort of restore for decades, I think no one has gotten to the point of getting there yet, as we see in a lot of our sort of west side, or maybe far southeast, or other neighborhoods that haven't developed yet, but I, I am concerned that perhaps we took away that opportunity that had been granted and was a part of the plan for this neighborhood, and that this, there are maybe some other routes in terms of when there's a site plan, or other things, that the neighborhood could contest and should go through as part of that process, but I support the amendment, because I think we're basically putting that use back to where it was with the owner, and avoiding some concerns about us changing that, Ms. Schultz, so, thank you to the, on the amendment. Counselor Benton, I'm sorry, I thought I was lost.
I'm sorry, just quickly, the, under the, under the MXL, single-family detached was not allowed, is that right?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yes, you cannot do single-family detached uses at all in the MXL zone.
Okay.
It's not permissive or conditional.
And can you do townhouses?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, the, the residential uses that are permissive in the MXL zone are townhouses, live-work dwellings, and multifamily.
Okay, so really, more dense residential development.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yes, certainly, more dense than just single-family housing.
Thank you.
Counselors, other discussion on the amendment on the floor. Hearing none, all those in floor, in favor of floor amendment number two say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that matter carries unanimously, we are back on the bill as amended twice. Counselors, discussion on the matter. Hearing none, back to the sponsors to close, Counselor Benton and Jones. All those in favor of oh eighty-nine as amended twice say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries unanimously. Next up, Counselor Benton, you want to start us, on final action, item B, R210.
Thank you, Mr. President, R210 is directing the administration to prepare an update to the City's International Energy Conservation Code to the adopt, to adopt the two hundred, 2018 version, I move a do-pass. And I move the amendment that's in your iPads.
Second.
And I need to pull that up, however, perhaps staff could read that amendment, have it more handy than I do.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, would you read that into the record for us, please?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Benton, this says on page two, lines 12 and 13, amend section two as follows, the recommendation shall be presented to the city council no later than, strike out the word March, add in the word April, first, 2020.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, Counselor Benton.
And, yeah, counselors, this is, sorry, this is the, part of the energy conservation codes that are created by the International Code Council, building codes that include everything from plumbing to commercial construction, residential construction, this is the energy conservation component of it, and we're still on the 2009 version of that, of that, the 2009 edition, if you will, of the International Energy Conservation Code, and, so we're in need of an update, we've had several updates since then, and the state is also in the process of looking at this, but we've gone on the record as declaring a climate emergency in the city, and we know that we're having record temperatures, hotter temperatures in our city, this code will make our building stock more resilient in the face of those higher temperatures going forward, and we've also, as part of that climate emergency, have committed ourselves to taking a look at a climate action plan based on the original climate action plan of 2009, and so there's really some opportunities for citizens to get involved, and to be in, to talk about how we can move forward with carbon-neutral buildings, and livable neighborhoods, and so forth, but this is just a simple move forward to 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, we anticipate, and my understanding is, is that the state is moving towards the 2018 anyway, this gives us an opportunity locally to go ahead and start to look at this and have it prepared, it's typical that local amendments are made to the energy conserv, to any of these codes, when we adopt them as part of our city administrative code, we do take into account local conditions, and so, there are some, some questions that, that were raised as to number of air changes per hour, things of that sort, that would, that would be considered as part of the, the process going forward, so this is simply directing the administration to move forward with preparing that, and hopefully also, for us to be more vocally involved in the state effort as well. The state energy code, when, when and if enacted, would, would work hand-in-hand with this local code.
Thank you, Counselor, and I think we're still on the amendment, we haven't voted on the amendment, is that right?
The, the amendment, yes, just, we did delay this for a while during the, when we, the vacancy occurred on the council, and, and, but, but, so we wanted to move it back, give the administration a little bit more time to, to pull it together.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Benton, any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, number one, say yes.
Yes.
That item carries forward, we're back on the bill as amended, Counselor Benton, are you okay if we move to the public comment on this item?
That'd be fine, thanks.
Let's get started. Arcelia Isaías, is that right? I know we've lost some folks tonight, so if I call you, or you know they're gone, let us know. Next up is Xavier Obando, who I know sent us a message that he's no longer here, next up will be Mr. Tom Solomon and Michael Barrio. Welcome.
Thank you, President Davis, and members of the council, my name is Arcelia Isaías, and I'm a fellow with Environment New Mexico, we're a nonprofit environmental advocacy organization dedicated to protecting our clean air, clean water, and open spaces, and we stand in strong support of resolution 210 to update our city's building codes to the 2018 version of the International Energy Conservation Code. Right now, we are in the midst of a climate emergency, and improving our building codes will make our homes and places of work more resilient in terms of withstanding extreme temperatures from droughts and snowstorms like we've started to see these past few years, ensuring that our buildings can adopt, adapt to these new and upcoming conditions is the bare minimum we should be doing to protect our most vulnerable residents. Additionally, adopting the most recent building codes ensures that our city is doing its part to address the cause of these extreme events by reducing the amount of greenhouse gases being released. Buildings in our state are the second-largest contributor to New Mexico's overall greenhouse gas emissions, and making our buildings more efficient reduces this number while also reducing our energy costs, and for these reasons and many more, we strongly urge you to vote in favor of resolution 210. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon, thanks for waiting with us, welcome back.
Thank you, and I have a, an exhibit that I'd like to put up shortly, so.
Sure. While they're doing that, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Solomon, next up, I think Mr. Barrio is not here, so we're going to have Lorraine Zunner and Ms. Sandra and Cliff Richardson behind Mr. Solomon.
Thank you, President Davis, councilors, I'm with 315 New Mexico, and we also strongly support resolution 210 to update these energy conservation building codes, which will reduce greenhouse gas emissions from a very significant sector of our economy, buildings. Solving the climate crisis will require a wide spectrum of solutions, ranging from the fairly easy to the very difficult. Adopting the 2018 energy conservation codes, which will reduce energy waste and save us money, that's an easy one, and we have to be able to do the easy ones. The Australian wildfires are one of the latest horrors happening as a result of the climate crisis, they're estimated to have burned over 2,500 homes in Australia, as along with an area the size of Kentucky, and killed over a billion wild creatures, from large animals like koalas and kangaroos to emus, and so many more. And while Australia is far away, maybe you saw this story in the August 25th Journal, saying that Austin is a tinderbox. It says that the current drought and heat conditions in neighboring Austin, Texas, only need a period of sustained 20 mile an hour winds and a spark to duplicate similar unstoppable wildfires in Travis County. We pass a climate emergency resolution, this is one of the things that we can do to act on that climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Next up, we have, is it Lauren or Lorraine Zunner? But seeing no person answering to that, Ms. Sandra and Mr. Cliff Richardson.
It's good to see so many familiar faces, and I'm so glad that you're so focused on getting back on plan, and, and the work that was being done up until 2009. It's unfortunate that we didn't continue the work in the time, and I, I know that I can't hold you accountable for that, but anyway, I wanted to commend what I'm seeing done, and we could always count on Counselor Benton, to be not only bipartisan, nonpartisan, but cutting-edge, and helping to educate the whole city to do the right thing, and I'm looking forward to seeing that continue, and also, for our Counselor Pat Davis, who while he's more of a newbie compared to Counselor Benton, on this good path, I count on all of you to do the work, and I will say this, I'm commending the way this meeting was held, I can remember free-for-alls when we used to come for the last couple of decades, and so it's really nice to see work getting done in a civilized, mature, professional way, and I look forward to helping in any way I can, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra. Mr. Richardson. It's always hard to follow her, but I feel like you must, you've done this before.
I'm Cliff Richardson, I reside in District Four, and am an energy engineer. Albuquerque is currently using the 2009 Energy Conservation Code for their designs, they are three cycles behind the most recent version, resulting in 20 to 25 percent potential energy savings in any construction. Municipal and government buildings use about 25, 75 percent of the amount of electricity generated, so it's prudent that the city adopt a modern, efficient standard by the date that you just changed it to. There is more on the horizon than just energy conservation, there is the potential of longer utility outages in all utilities due to terrorism, and more likely cybersecurity issues, having the demand of utilities help in times of greater energy needs, the ability, the idea of sustainability, surety, resilience, and reliability should also be considered. Municipalities are seeking a need, are seeing a need to plan for outages for up to 30 days. Resiliency might be doing a little off the subject of energy conservation, but the solid foundation for the planning efforts should be able, should be available, every day without a newest standard means you're wasting the future.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Next up is Derek Wallen, Waldensen?
Waldensen.
Thank you, sir. Will be followed by Dylan Connolly and Tad Nemenski.
Yes, I'm Derek Waldensen, a longtime Albuquerque resident, I'm testifying in favor of improving the energy efficiency of the city's building codes, however, a neglected area in the code is exterior lighting, this is important because it creates light pollution. Wasted light has wasted energy, and this needs to be in any building, any energy code, commercial or residential. Light pollution is unnecessary glare that worsens contrast, increasing personal and driving hazards where you can't tell what's there, it's skyglow, contributing to Albuquerque's light pollution dome extending 50 miles in every direction into the night sky, it's trespassing where light from a neighbor's wall blaster, or a city's streetlight shines into your backyard or bedroom, or causes too much visual confusion at night on urban thoroughfares. Why care? Our health is tied to the day and night cycle, it deteriorates when there is too much light at night, increasing risks like cancer. Birds, insects, and plants' importance to the ecology and our well-being are affected. There is a growing number of locations around the city, Vaidoro, Salinas, Beblos, El Moro, internationally recognized for the exceptionally dark skies, New Mexico also has a heritage going back a thousand years with cultures like Chaco. In a state with big tech economy, there are millions of dollars of observatories, public, private, and defense, that need dark skies to work, and the light spills outside of a curve directed toward Arizona is wasted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Dylan Connolly, who I don't see, and Tad Nemenski, will be followed by Jim McKenzie and Annette Ollender.
Thank you, my name is Tad Nemenski. Well, my question is, in what cost, how much, and who's going to pay for it? But it's very clear, all government building being constructed was consuming energy, all government. What, now you're asking? Well, I have another question, 15, that's nationally residential homes and commercial building, second largest, well, what about who's first polluter? Well, what about who's first polluter? I assume that's cars. Well, that's bring me to the, to the question all saying, why don't buy gas, ride horses? What are them? You know what they're doing? Quality pollution. Well, are we gonna, how are we gonna resolve it? Now, what about modern, versatile, old adobe strobeio was very popular, tied up in all kinds of regulation? And that is very economical, was, not anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie.
Thank you, President Davis, city councilors. My name is Jim McKenzie. I'm a co-coordinator of 350 New Mexico. We're a grassroots organization focused on climate change, and we have approximately 6,500 members in the city. I'm here to stand in support of the Resolution 210, and my only question really is, why it took so long? I'm, I'm glad we're on the cusp of this, and we will be back for further improvements in the energy code in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Annette Ollender? Will be followed by Damian Laura and Delise Delius, if I can read the right.
Yes, I am in support of R210. Albuquerque is 10 years overdue for an energy efficiency review, if not a complete overhaul. The planet has reached a critical mass due to massive climate change worldwide. Over four months of raging bushfires in Australia have cost the lives of 1 billion animals. Many of these already critically endangered, like flying foxes and marsupials found nowhere else in the world, and it isn't just animal life that suffers. We all suffer. Let it be known that we are well past the 11th hour. We haven't much time to steer the ship away from the enormous iceberg, to speak metaphorically, the majority of which remains hidden from view. In the next 10 years, if things stay as they are with our antiquated dependence on fossil fuels, Earth will lose over one-third of her entire animal base, and this does not include the human cost. We must cut fossil fuel consumption everywhere we can, make all building construction as energy efficient as possible retrofitting older structures, make clean mass transit more available and affordable for everyone, improve energy efficiency standards for all appliances, and convert entire economies and municipalities to 100 percent alternative energy within five years at the most. The planet cannot wait. She is crying out to us. We cannot wait either. Thank you.
Thank you. Damian Laura?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I also stand here in support of R19210. This isn't just a climate issue, which of course it is, and everybody that spoke before me is absolutely right. We need to do this, and we really need to have done it a long time ago. But this is also a socioeconomic issue for our state. As stated previously, this helps people who rent homes, apartment buildings, to keep their energy costs low and increase their quality of life. And it also helps our economy move forward and stay competitive with the rest of our neighboring states and all the rest of our localities. Earlier this morning, I spoke with the executive director of the Association of General Contractors, and as Mr. President, Council Benton indicated, the state is also moving forward. This is ideal. As the largest industry in the state, we can lead, and you should lead, and allows the rest of the organization to put that forward, to put pressure on the state so that the rest of the state moves forward and implements these same guidelines. And, and of course, Mr. President and Mr. Benton said, we will also make sure that we have our local climate zones, you know? Angel Fire is different from Alamo Gordo, as it is from Albuquerque, as it is from Las Cruces, and so that is important. But I do ask that this council hold steadfast and no longer continue to push forward either from March to April or any further, and bring this up for a vote. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Delise Delius?
President, councilors, first, I just want to say thank you for passing the climate emergency resolution back in September. That was a huge step forward, and I appreciate everyone's work to get that done. This is another step in the right direction that we must take and that we have to take as quickly as possible, and so I thank you for bringing it up again. I just want to approach this from a standpoint of, of real estate, because in the past, I've heard some of the, the folks from the Home Builders Association claim that if this were to pass, that it would make homes unaffordable for, for folks to get into. In the last year, 400 homes were sold in Albuquerque, new homes. Of those homes, 58 percent of them were over the $250,000 threshold. So for, for me, looking at this as a real estate consultant and, and a broker in the city, home builders are not building for affordable homes, and the savings that they would incur from the energy efficiency of these homes would far outweigh the, the minute expense that they would incur on an increased $5,000 on a mortgage payment. So, so I agree with Damian Laura that it is an affordability factor. Utility cost is about 30 percent of low-income folks, and so this would be helpful to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up, we have Nancy Singh, who I don't think is here. Oh, there she is.
Ninety seconds.
Oh, you're fine. You waited this long. We can give you time to run down here.
Hold on, everybody. President Davis, council members, I've been volunteering on the increasingly urgent issue of climate change since I retired from kindergarten teaching four years ago, and I'm here to urge you to pass this resolution and to urge the city planning department to adopt these more energy-efficient codes. To do so, as I see it, as other people have talked about, would be a win-win-win. It's a win for homeowners who will be able to live in more comfortable homes. We don't have to look to Australia to see summer temperatures. For last August in Albuquerque, high daily temperatures ran a full 10 degrees above the 100-year average every single day. It's a win financially for new building owners who, with a tiny increase in monthly mortgage payments, could reap hundreds of dollars in potential energy savings over the life of the building. And it's a win for residents of the city, state, and planet as energy-efficient codes help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, before we get on to deliberation, I want to ask if the administration has any, wants to weigh in here, has any input on this legislation?
Mr. President and members of the council, we worked with Council Benton on this resolution. The mayor is very supportive of introducing the code, and we hope to get that to you all before the April deadline, so we appreciate Council Benton working with us on the, on moving the date a bit. And with that, as Council Benton would say, we urge your support.
Thanks. Counselors, questions, discussion, conversation, Council Basson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions and maybe a comment, too, to throw in there. So, in, in the write-up, it says that there was a committee created, and that it was, the analysis from that committee was supposed to be submitted to the council by May 15, 2019, and we have not received the recommendation yet. Is there an update to that?
Madam, Mr. President and Council Basson, Mr., I hope he's still there. There he is. Yeah. Our, Mr. Williams from our planning department can give you an update on where things are with the committee work.
Mr. Williams, you stuck it out this whole time. We have to call you.
Mr. President, Council Basson, there was a, a change in department leadership at the time the report was being prepared. We were, I am actively working now with members of that committee and our building official to, to prepare that report and submit it for council consideration. It obviously will be part of the work that we're doing now as it relates to this legislation.
And, Mr. President, is the committee still the same people? Is it still filled with all of those positions, or has it changed?
Mr. President, Council Basson, my understanding is that the committee still remains. It's been several months since they've, since they've met, but certainly the intent is to reconvene the committee and, and report back to them as, as part of this process.
Okay, thank you. So, the other thing I want to clarify, too, is that this, tonight's resolution is to direct the administration to actually prepare an update, correct? It's not to actually adopt an update?
Council Benton, is that right?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Council Basson, the, the, this is directing the administration. The actual passage of an update would be as part of a, an amendment to the Uniform Administrative Code, and we would vote on that.
Thank you. So, this will allow us to start our preparations, but then also allow for the state to start moving forward with their, their new guidelines as well?
Mr. President, Council Basson, the, the state is already in the process of, of doing this, so we want to be hand-in-hand with them, and, you know, this is really just for us to try to, to move forward and get ready for it, so.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, thank you. So, I just want to say that I am most definitely all for bringing things into the new kind of era at this point, when we're talking 2009 to 2018. I do think that it should be noted that I, I also am happy to hear that we can still have some amendments made, because I, although I think that we will have the ability to have cost savings on an energy level at home, and it is crucial to our environment, I also think that it is something to consider for affordable housing and the income, the, the price of different dwellings and housings for seniors and also low-income families that we need to make sure to take that into account for later. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Basson. Council Gibson, Madam Vice President.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge all the work that's been done on this for quite some time now, not only the administration, but the committee that was, that was put together, and, and Council Benton for his perseverance in, in getting us, moving us towards 2019, actually 2020 now. So, if we pass it now, we'll only, we'll only be behind by, well, one year, next year. So, anyway, thank you for everybody. Thank you, counselor, and I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Other comments or questions? Before we go to Council Benton to close, let me just say, I appreciate very much, Council Benton added me to this legislation, but didn't ask me to do a whole lot, and wasn't necessary, mainly because this has been something he's been working on for so long and has really persevered for. I think our city's better for it. We hear a lot lately, and particularly, that New Mexico sort of had a loss, and Albuquerque had a lost decade in terms of our progress on all kinds of issues, and this is just one more to add to that list. But I think we are making progress. We are, this is another place where we can be a leader again, as we heard Damian say a minute ago. You know, this council was the one, how many years, what, five years, four or five years ago now, that laid out our first renewable energy goals for 2025, setting us up to start doing this exact work in our new buildings and in retrofit, to make our city more energy efficient, to make, make us more sustainable as a community. And it was really, Council Benton was a huge piece of, of laying that groundwork. But also, now, the mayor came in, we're expanding that to make us one of the, the first sustainable cities in the country by 2030. We passed pace legislation to help businesses adapt to this, this coming change, both in new construction and in retrofit, and I'm looking forward to that meeting, that implementation meeting, I think, coming up in a couple of weeks about how we're gonna roll that out. We've done a lot in this city, both in terms of setting the expectation and helping businesses get to the, and developers and builders and business owners get to the place where we ought to be as a city to lead on this. And so I think it's just absolutely good that, as the, the state's largest city, that we're taking this leadership role, and I appreciate that our city's willing to do that. So, thanks, Counsel, for bringing this to us, and Council Benton to close.
Thanks. I did want to, to have President Davis on this bill because of the work we've done in the past with renewable energy, but the building envelope is sort of the first line of defense. You can have all the renewable energy that, that you can produce, but even that would be wasted if you've got a poor building envelope, and that's why I really was talking about resilience as well with climate change. So, more and more of our working people do not, cannot afford their own homes. This isn't gonna change that necessarily, but if they're renters, as, as Damian said, we'll, they'll definitely benefit from this moving forward. I want to just thank two groups who have spoken in favor of this, in addition to 350.org and, and the other environmental organizations that spoke in favor of it. But I was really impressed to have the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioner Engineers. Our local chapter is in support of this. So, those are the mechanical engineering professionals, and then also my colleagues on the American Institute of Architects, local chapter, the Environmental Committee of the, of the AIA, the Committee on the Environment of the AIA is also supportive. So, good partners and people who will be resources as we go forward and work on these amendments and get it, get it fine-tuned for our local environment, so. Urge your support.
Thank you, Council Benton. Hearing no more discussion in that matter, having closed, all those in favor of item R210 say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Hearing none on that item carries unanimously. Congratulations, Counselor. Counselor Benton, R7.
Me, me?
I'm sorry, Counsel Gibson. Yes.
I'm the other Counselor Benton.
You're the other. Okay. Madam Vice President, R7.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I am moving a do-pass for R7, Making Findings in connection with the Resolution of Winrock Town Center Tax Increment Development, District One, authorizing the issuance and sale of senior tax, lean tax, senior lean tax increment bonds and subordinate lean tax increment bonds, ratifying and approving the issuance and sale of the Winrock Town Center Tax Increment Development, District One, Senior Lean Gross Receipts Tax Increment Bonds, Series 2020A and Series 2020B. And as I said, I'll move a do-pass. Need a second.
We have a motion and a second on R7. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item? I don't think so, do we? Counsel Gibson.
All right. Just, just a few words on this. What we're doing here is, what the tax district is doing, the, the TID district is doing, is paying off the bonds before, refinancing the bonds that were issued in, in 2015. And I should really let Mr. Griego do this, because he does it so much better. And then we do have the developer and Ms. Sweeney as bond counsel.
Mr. Griego to present?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, Madam Vice President Gibson. You're absolutely right, and you did a great job. This particular piece of legislation is, has two parts. There's a refunding portion that has some cost-saving component attached to it, and some new money. So, I would probably draw your, draw your attention first and foremost to the savings component. This is the refunding or refinancing of the Series 2015 bonds. The present value of savings is about $2,674,000, and percentage of savings of refunded bonds, 6.572, 6.57 percent. The second component is the new monies that we talked about, Series 2020A. Par amount on those bonds is 42 million. True interest cost is 4.9 million, or 4.9 percent, rather. True interest, of course, is the interest account with the time value of money accounted for in that, in that percentage. Average coupon is 5 percent, and average life of 13.747, which is very similar to the refunding portion, which is 13.756 years.
Counsel Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Griego. We also do, as I mentioned, have the developer here, Mr. Sand, as well as Ms. Sweeney, the bond counsel, if anyone has any questions or would like to hear anything more about it.
And Counsel, I believe you have a floor sub. Do you want to move that?
Oh, thank you. Yes, I will move the floor sub right now. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor sub? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the floor sub say yes.
Yes.
And back to Counsel Gibson, and I see we have questions from councilors as well. Counsel Griego.
Mr. Griego?
Mr. Grego, I just wondered, how often do we reissue these bonds? I mean, how, you know, because you mentioned that they're existing bonds that we're sort of reallocating and then, or re, I guess, I don't know what the term is, but, and then there's new money? So, could you explain the difference, please?
Absolutely. Counsel President Davis, Counselor Grego, typically, it's done around when there's about a 3 percent savings to be had, but of course, that can be done at any time, just how the, the market sort of is trending, and we'd like to take advantage of it at that particular point in time, but the trigger is generally about a 3 percent savings.
So, we are saving some money by reissuing these bonds at this particular time?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, the percentage saving of refunded bonds is 6.57 percent, so it's well above that 3 percent threshold. If anybody's followed the market recently, there's been some pretty dramatic shifts in the interest rates with some of the decreases, and generally what happens is, if there's a decrease in the interest rate, there's an increase in bond prices, right? So, absolutely, this is a great time to do that.
So, do we look at all of our bonds, or do, are we just looking at certain ones? I mean, for reissuing?
Um.
I mean, do we kind of have like a table that says?
Sure.
These bonds are coming up, and they're, they're needing to be renewed or re-looked at just to have some cost savings? Do we have that sort of a table or something?
Sure. Counsel President Davis, Counselor Grego, we do have a, a committee, and our bond counsel reviews them periodically, and they generally review all the bonds we have outstanding and see which are the best candidates, and then sort of move forward along with their recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselors, other questions?
Counsel Grego to close? I mean, Counsel Gibson to close? I've done that twice today, right? I'm sorry. It's late.
Thank you, Mr. President Jones. So, I'll urge your support on this. This has been a really successful project so far. We did issue, as Mr. Grego said, that we did issue bonds in 2015, and we got a lot done out there. If you haven't been out there yet, I would hope that you drive over there, and this should pretty much do the rest of the, most of the rest of the public infrastructure that's needed. So, I urge your support.
Thank you. There being no other discussion, all those in favor of item R7 as substituted, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that item carries unanimously, and there being no further business, this city council meeting is adjourned.